There you go.
All right. So, we're going to talk tonight about the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Wagner and Wagner School District. We collectively used to be in the multi-jurisdictional Wagner County Hazard Mitigation Plan. It expired, so then we had no access to federal grants. And so, for a lot of reasons, we decided that we were going to separate and have our own Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Wagner and include the school district. We put together, I put together the original plan and submitted it to Oklahoma Emergency Management because the state has to review it first, and once they approve it, then it goes to FEMA. Once FEMA approves it, then it will come back and we will have to do, adopt a resolution, and the school district will have to adopt a resolution for this. But I got that from Matt Rollins today, just confirming what I already knew. So, this will probably be, I don't know how long it will take to get through both approvals, but we received comments from the Oklahoma Emergency Management in 2017 when we submitted it. I reached out to FEMA, the people who review them at FEMA. They reviewed it, gave me comments, and so, it's just taken time. I'll give credit to Taylor Tannahill, who was the previous city planner. He helped me a lot with this, collecting all the data and going through it. And it's really pretty good. There are copies here after the meeting, if you want to look at some stuff. I'm going to tell you exactly where to go to see the meat of this. But I'm going to, I want to review it just in overview real quickly and let you know what we're doing. So, City Wagner is a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program. We've been in since 1978, it is. And so, by having a Hazard Mitigation Plan, we are eligible to file for grant applications to do things. There isn't always money there. There's three types of grants. There's hazard mitigation grants, there's pre-flood mitigation grants, and there's post-flood mitigation grants, although the last two have just recently combined into one. And so, but when there's a disaster, like the disaster we had in 2015, we would have been eligible at that time to apply for grants for things like buying out houses for the pump station we want to do at Dyke 10, drainage issues that we have, things for the schools, safe rooms for the schools, stuff for the police, stuff for the fire department. There's all sorts of stuff, and like I say, there's a whole lot of those in Chapter 6 of this that you can look at. But we are bounded by our corporate boundaries, and once we get this, we can apply for grants. These are, these have to be updated every five years. So, in the fourth year, so if it gets approved next year, like I hope, then five years from now, four years from now, we'll have to start going through and reviewing it. But this is a living document, and my intention is to stay on everybody so that we are looking at it all the time, because there's a lot of stuff in here that we want to do. I've already touched that. So, there's a lot of different hazards that we as a community, all communities have. And so, we identify the types of hazards. We did a planning process. We just had our third committee that's part of the planning process. We identify the hazards. We evaluate mitigation options, and then we come up with a strategy for implementing things. And then, there's a, we, there's an adoption process, which is in Chapter 6. And that's the, that's the guts of the book, but I'll show you some other stuff here in a minute. This, the Hazard Mitigation Program was created under, by Robert Stafford, our astronaut. When he came back from space, he got involved in disaster relief and emergency management stuff. And so, they named the disaster portion of the National Flood Insurance Program after him. So, this is the Stafford Act that gives us the public law, that gives us the money that Congress will come up with to do this for disasters. The federal government has a Hazard Mitigation Plan. The state of Oklahoma has a Hazard Mitigation Plan, and all communities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program are supposed to have a Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you don't, you're not eligible for grants. You can't do it. That's why this is so important. And the basics of it is to try and improve the safety and well-being of our citizens here. And just like our Oklahoma Flood Plan Management Association, our theme is we want to reduce the potential for death and to maintain integrity and minimize property damage, maintain the integrity of the environment. So, Chief Kelly, who's not here, is our fire chief and emergency manager. I'm the flood plan administrator, Randy Harris, who's superintendent of schools is on this list because he's under the, he's the school part of this Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I'm the mayor. So, these are the types of hazards that we looked at. Floods, tornadoes, high winds, lightning, hail, severe winter storms, extreme heat, drought, expansive soils, that's clay going up and down, wildfires, earthquakes, which we didn't used to have, but now we do, hazardous materials, and dam, dike, and levee breaks. And that, that last one would be if Dyke 10 breached during a flood from Fort Gibson, you know, if, if all of the dams on the ground were to fail, and we had a major thing and it breached the dam, then that would be part of that. Not very likely, but it is. So, we had this open to the public ever since we started it. We had meetings, we had, we had developers involved in this, we had our community leaders involved in this, and we, and the public, view the public. We created this C W E M A, City Wagner Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Had to come up with something, so that's what we did. And we've had three meetings, and we had the first meeting, it says there, it's held on December 4. That doesn't, that doesn't jive with the others. There's another date before you look better.
I read it, Nick.
Okay. So, there's 13 hazards that we investigated that those, that I listed before. And so, the city buildings, private homes, school buildings, the streets, literally everything that's physical within the City of Wagner is covered within this Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so, we're trying to reduce the risk of vulnerability and damage in the event of any one of those different natural hazards. Flooding is by forte, and so, there's more about flooding in there than anything, but we have a lot of flooding. We have all sorts of flooding. We have major flooding because of the lake, because of East Cole Creek, which is a detailed A E, which is a detailed study with a floodway on it. We have the unnamed North Tributary, we have the South Tributary, and then we have Dyke 10 area, which is an interior drainage issue. Dyke 10, when the court, when Fort Gibson rises and they shut the valve off, all the stormwater, about a third of the city drains to that area, passing through schools. And so, imagine a bathtub, and the drain is locked closed, and your water faucet is just running. And it fills up, and it fills up, and it fills up. We have, we've had what we call training storms. One, three days later, another one, three days later, another one. Call those training storms. And it just fills up, fills up, fills up, and along Proctor, those houses flood, the bus farm floods. And so, one of the first grant applications I'm going to do is for a major pump station in the Dyke 10 area, so that the mayor doesn't have to spend his time up on the dike with pumps and generators all night long trying to keep that down, sucking water through a swamp.
You got them going to say, "Dwane, Dwayne."
And Dwayne, and all of you. So, we do have a very high hazard flooding issue, and it's not just those floods, it's also the ditches, the bar ditches, the culverts. And we've been working on a program, I set up a program to improve ditches and culverts, and we've been doing that over the last year. More catch as catch can, but, but there are a lot of ditches and culverts that have been improved in the last year than there was in the last 25 or 30. Tornado, there have been tornadoes here, $29.6 million in property damage, 73, 1960. And so, just like every place else in Oklahoma, where tornado hazard is a high hazard. So, that's one of the, another of the second hazard that we look at. High wind, we get high winds, and there is damage as a result of it, not as much, but we're on the downstream, downhill side of the plain, of the mountains, Rocky Mountains, and it comes through, so we have high, high wind hazards. Lightning, there has been a lightning strike at the substation, and there was some damage. It is more, it's not as likely as, not that it can't happen, but the part issue is we don't get reports of lightning damage. You know, if somebody, if somebody's house gets hit by lightning, we may or may not get the damage, so I don't have the data to report it, so we're going to improve that. Hail, kind of the same type thing. We've been experiencing, but again, as we get the summer, you know, the spring tornadoes, we get a lot of hail, and so, that's a high, highly likely hazard here in Wagner. Heat, we went through a heat spell in 2017, and that really affects the elderly more than anything. And so, there's an impact on the electricity system, there's an impact on the water, we get more evaporation, so we don't have as much water. It affects livestock, it affects agriculture, it affects the road, streets and roads, because they tend to buckle when you have that kind of stuff, so there's a lot of impact for that. So, we have a pretty high hazard for that. Drought, same thing. We went through a three-year drought period. And again, it's kind of the opposite. We don't have, we have more wildfires, we have a lack of water, we have lack, lack of, it affects the crop lands and things like that, and the prices go up, so it affects us. And when it's really hot, we don't have as much tourism and recreation. Expansive soils, that's, you know, the clay going, getting wet, dry, wet, dry, up, down, up, down. We haven't had any catastrophic, so it's unlikely, but there are foundation issues on probably almost every structure I have at my house as a result of this. Wildfires, a big one. The winds, the winds have been really increasing the last couple of years, it seems like. And I was burned out in a wildfire in Manford, and largest wildfire in Oklahoma, 110 square miles. And so, we, that's another highly likely hazard that we encounter. Earthquakes, not that we don't have them, because there is now a Oklahoma earthquake map that till about five, six years ago, we never had, never, never had it. The cause is, there's a lot of speculation on the exact cause of that, but we have had some, some pretty good, that have, they have reached here, that, that they just haven't been as high magnitude to do much damage. So, it's kind of unlikely. We would probably be affected more on this side of the state by New Madrid earthquake that happened in 1908 on the Mississippi River in the Blue Hill of Missouri. That would likely be our new hazard. Hazardous materials, I've talked with the chief about this a lot. We do have a listing of hazardous material locations in the book here, but I see the biggest potential is the truck traffic and the railroads. And so, there, those are the, there's more things to talk about and think about that. That's going to be a longer-term trial, trial resolution, because we don't want to reroute 69th Highway. We don't want to get it outside of the city, nor will, and the trains are certainly not going to move, because I'm reading the book about Wagner and the history of how Wagner was just started. And then, the lab levee, dam breaks, we have Fort Gibson, Markham Ferry, Pensacola. I'm an FERC inspector, and so, I do FERC licensing and dam inspections for people like GRDA. And each of those has a Hazard Mitigation, an Emergency Action Plan, not a Hazard Mitigation Plan, as well as the Corps of Engineers. And so, they have to do five-year inspections on the dams. The likelihood of that is pretty small, but it could happen. There have been dam breaches throughout the United States. The one in Missouri was a kind of a weird one, but there have been dam breaks that are potentially catastrophic. So, then we looked at the inventory, the vulnerability of it, and we estimated, Taylor helped me with this, estimated the damage to the structures that has occurred with each type of probability. And I'm not going to go into it, it's in the, it's in the book. And then, we set out mitigation strategies. How would we look at different things to do, like the Dyke 10, to alleviate the flooding in the, in the Proctor area and the school? How would, what kinds of things, how would the, what would the school do for improving their safe rooms? How could they modify the schools to do that kind of thing? Those are some typical ones that we do. And so, our goal is to identify the vulnerable populations, the critical facilities. We, we are not supposed to have any critical, no, no community in the National Flood Insurance Program is supposed to have any critical facilities. That's hospital, police station, fire station. You may think this is strange, but private nursing homes are not considered critical facilities under FEMA. So, but hospitals are. So, you know, we ever, the wastewater treatment plant is kind of unique, and everybody has the same problems. It's always in the lowest spot. And so, the, the way that that is mitigated is by putting a dike around it and having a generator and pumps and, you know, your normal electricity, but a standby generator pumping it out. That is, that is one of the few critical facilities that FEMA allows to be in the special flood hazard area and in the low spots, because there's nothing else you can do. So, we looked at mitigation strategies, just some things that are going on. The, we're updating the hydrology and hydraulic models for all the FEMA flood hazards. I finished the detailed study on the North Trib. I'm working on the South Trib. I will probably file that with FEMA next week, and we're working on the interior drainage right now. And then, once we get that, I'm going to start writing grants, as I said, for the permanent pump station. We already designed three regional stormwater detention facilities in Wagner that are on Dwayne's shelf there of construction to do. We implemented a stormwater ordinance back right after I came, four years ago, and we have, we have not turned down a single stormwater permit application. There are some that they had to do some redesign on, but there's not a single one that we turned down. We've done 62 permits this year alone, and for development going on, so. And then, I administer, administer the flood planning ordinance. On our tornado hazard, we're going to encourage building of individual safe rooms, and we'll probably talk about community storm shelters. On hail, a lot of these, there's not a lot of options, like there is in flooding, but on hail, promote the builders to put hail-resistant roofs on. Lightning, it'll be a public outreach awareness and to help, again, prevent damages. The winter hazard, we don't get a lot of big storms, but when we do, the power goes out. And a long term, and I mean the long term goal, would be to put the electricity underground. That's what they have done over the years up in the northern tier, because it just goes out all the time. We, it's a, there's a benefit cost, and our outage compared to the cost is, doesn't get very far. High winds, again, it's an education for the building trade. A lot of the, for, high winds and tornadoes go together, and the, the high tornado areas and the high wind, the hurricane, the coastal facilities, they have much higher standards for the joints on like walls and roof trusses going together, and that's what I'm talking about here, is educating our people to do it. There's a lot of videos that they, that FEMA has done of actual physical testing of different wall connections, and the typical one that we would build here compared to one that just has higher strength joints, the first one goes down in about 30 seconds, and the other one, it'll shake, but it won't, it won't fall, so. Drought hazards, it's an outreach program, again, there's maybe some code issues associated with that. The wildfire, again, Kelly's got a pretty good handle on the wildfire and doing, not only helping here, but outside the city limits. Water, providing water during large wildfires. One of the things that I, I talked to him about is that, you know, when you go up in the rural areas and the, all the little rural fire departments have that sign out in front that says high, higher dam danger. I want to put those at every fire station, and I want to put them at every entrance of north, south, east, west, and put them up there. I think they're really cool. But it, it makes people aware that, I always, whenever I'm driving, I always see those. It, it's an eye catcher, so it makes people aware. Earthquake hazard, again, there's not much physically we can do other than encourage the building trades on a different program. The hazardous waste, that's a, that's a tough one, because we don't have as much control over the railroads and interstate commerce as a local community, but we're going to, I'm going to look into that and see what we can really do. The dike levee, again, coordination with GRDA primarily in the core on there, just for when there's a safety incident, but it, keeping us in the loop, and they do to some extent, but I think there's more that could be done. And then, the heat hazard, extreme heat hazard, outreach, education, maybe we could get a grant to purchase air conditioners for the elderly. That's a, that's, that's been done before. Or periodic check-in, as, as your patrol officers are going around, if you know that that, that couple over there, you, the ambulance has been there too many times, you know, to check on them. Doesn't take very long. And you get a lot of PR out of that. So, for each one, we've got, we've got the mitigation strategies kind of put down. Our action plan is, if you want to look at anything, look at Chapter 5, because we have, that's where the rubber meets the road, and those are all of the recommended actions that we have come up with collectively, between us and the school and the public and the staff, of things that could be done. And if you think about this chapter, it's just like coming up on Christmas. Y'all have children, you have grandchildren, you remember back when you were a kid, and here's my wish list. Now, we didn't get it all. Sometimes we didn't get any of it, but this is our wish list. And having these lists of action items in the Hazard Mitigation Plan makes every one of them eligible for funding. So, if you leave something out, you can't get it funded, so we put the kitchen sink in here, so that we have enough information in there for, to handle anything, almost anything that we want to do. We have 40 action items for the city, we have 17 action items at the school district that we're in. And so, for each, for those 40, we have some in each category, each of the 14 categories. So, it, it really covers the gamut of every type of hazard that we are exposed to and that we're going to try and do. So, once, once that happens, we'll start prioritizing, and we're going to, we'll do a grant, like I say, to me, the Dyke 10 is one of the biggest issues that we need to do, and so, that's, I've actually started drafting a grant application for that, and once this gets approved. And then, we can, if we get something done, when we go to the next five-year cycle, we'll take it out. We might replace it with something else that has come up, and that, that Christmas wish list that's there will never go away, and it'll always be there, so that, you know, as funding comes up. And I want to, I want to sidebar here just for a minute. When there's a disaster, so to understand this, when there's a disaster, the state, the, the state emergency management, OEM, through OEM, reaches out to all of the emergency managers in every community. One of their first jobs is to go out and assess damages so that they can accumulate the cost for a state declaration. Depending on that amount, then it can be submitted for a federal declaration. When a federal declaration is issued, and we have six current federal declarations that go back about five years. And so, when that is declared, then there's money available. That's where the Hazard Mitigation money comes from. There's a, it's a 12% of the declared value of that federal declaration goes to Hazard Mitigation money. And so, every time we have a declaration, we can ask for money. What OEM wants is, give me all of your grant applications, we'll review them, if we have money, we can talk about it. If we don't have money, we're going to put it on the shelf, so it's like the shovel-ready A R R A. And then, when the next time we have a declaration, and we will have more declarations, then we'll pull it off and prioritize it and get money back. Most of these are a 75-25 match. 75-25 match, and they, the match doesn't have to be in cash. My time for the engineering that I do for the city is a soft match. Albert's time, when he does surveys, is a soft match when you have the city. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we can do. Once this is adopted, we're going to maintain it, and we can kind of review it. And that's what your job, mayor, and your job, Dwayne, and my job is going to be, is continually looking and overviewing these things, and we're going to bring Robin in as the planner to help us with this stuff, too. So, we have a, we've gone through the, our emergency advisory committee, put this up, we'll submit it, and then, like I say, in four years, we'll start this process all over again. Because it's already been submitted to OEM once, and FEMA's already kind of looked at it, I'm hoping that this will pass and go through pretty quickly. The COVID is the thing that's going to slow everything down, because everybody's looking from home and it's happening. from home and just that. So, as soon as OEM approves it, and it goes to FEMA, Region Six in Denton, and as soon as they approve it, then we'll have a, we'll have a council meeting, city council meeting to adopt it, and the, and Randy will have a school board to adopt it, and we'll send them the resolutions that, that are written up, and then, then we're ready to go. We talked about the soft and hard cost sharing. CBG money can be used to supplement part of our cushion. So, if we have, it's like you can go to one pot in order to pay for part of what we have to do for another pot. So, you know, there's, there's a, that's outside of my realm of expertise, but there, I just know that it happens all the time. And HUD, we can use HUD money also. HUD, if you don't know, HUD has a flood overflow. If FEMA doesn't pay everything, you, HUD has a, a flood, flood fund that they can help with, with, too. Anyway, so, that's the gist of what I had to say. If you have comments, if you want...